Hello, can you hear me? All right, welcome, everybody. Those of you here in the room and also everyone who's logging in online. My name is Clara Cantor from Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, and I'm here representing the big coalition of organizations that came together to host this forum. So, welcome. A couple of things about the space first. Bathrooms are, if you head back out the way that you came and take a right, there's bathrooms there down the hallway. If you need anything, there's a couple of folks who are outside or in the front row and make people to help space as well. I want to give a huge thank you to all of our hosting organizations. There's a thing I'm listening to get through here. It's 350 Seattle, Amper San Bike Club, Amalgamated Transit Union Local 587, Casket Bicycle Club, the City of Seattle School Traffic Safety Committee, Disability Mobility Initiative, Disability Rights Washington, Duomo Valley Safe Streets, National Federation of the Blind, Seattle Chapter, Puget Sound Sage, Seattle Subway, Seattle Neighborhood Greenways, Seattle Transit Riders Union, Transportation Choices Coalition, The Urbanist, Transportation for Washington, Teensters 117, Washington Bikes, Washington Council of the Blind, Epic Society, and West Seattle Connection. I also want to give a huge shout out to Sanaa Tina Sanchez, who has been coordinating a vast majority of the forum thing on this year, and also tomorrow Cameron, who's doing our AV, and to Darling Rodello and Signing Resources for our facilities. I'm going to turn it over in a minute to our moderator, Crystal Fincher, who is a political consultant who hosts the Hacks and Woks podcast and radio show, where she gathers insight into local politics and policy in Washington state through the lens of those doing the work, kind of seeing perspectives on what's happening, why it's happening, and what you can do about it. And before I do that, I just want to give a quick accessibility reminder to everyone on stage. Because we have folks logging in online and watching virtually through and the transcript happening through card. If you're able to say your name before you start speaking, that's really helpful. Thank you so much, everyone.
And I want to welcome again everyone here to this Seattle City Council District One Candidate Forum. Again, my name is Crystal Fincher. I'm a political consultant and host of a Hacks and Woks radio show and podcast. I'm honored to be here with you and welcome you all to tonight's forum. I'm also excited to hear from our guests running for Seattle City Council District One. We're excited to be able to livestream this event. This features questions from the various organizations involved. A few reminders before we jump into the debate. I want to remind you all to vote. Ballots will be mailed to your mailbox starting Wednesday, July 12th. You can vote anytime until primary election day on Tuesday, August 1st. You can register to vote, update your registration, and see what will be on your ballot at votewa.gov. That's vote wa.gov. I also want to remind you that if you had a previous felony conviction, your right to vote is now automatically restored after you serve your prison term, even while on community supervision. Go to freethevotewa.org for more details and please help spread the word. So, the candidates running for Seattle City Council District One with us tonight are Phil Tabel. Maran Costa is also running. However, she unfortunately was not able to be with us tonight because of an illness, so we have her representative Kyler with us this evening. Then we have Stephen over Stephen Brown. Then we have Preston on the other side, Preston Anderson, as well as Jean Yenelli-Cretian. Welcome all. So, tonight's debate will begin with candidate introductions. Each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves and tell us their top priority. After introductions, we'll enter a lightning round of yes/no questions, which candidates will answer silently by raising their yes and no sheets to give their answer. The lightning round questions will be broad to reflect the broad coalition that's doing this and will focus on transit mobility, but also include others. After introductions, after the yes/no questions, we will enter the open answer portion of the debate. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer each question. Times will be indicated by our wonderful volunteers in the front row, holding a sign up. When a candidate has 30 seconds remaining, volunteers will hold up the 30-second sign. When there's 15 seconds remaining, there will be a pink 15-second sign. And when a candidate's time's up, you will hear the times-up bell ring, at which time you need to be wrapped up and we're going to move on. Please respect your fellow candidates and this audience by staying within your allotted time. Each candidate also has one 60-second rebuttal card to use during this debate. They can raise this card at any time during the open answer period and get 60 seconds to address anything they want, whether it's giving a further explanation of an issue or response, responding to something said by an opponent, or elaborating on lightning round questions. Now, we'll turn to the candidates, who will each have one minute to introduce themselves, starting with Seattle City Council District One candidate, Phil Tabel.
Thank you very much, Crystal. Thank you all for coming here today and all of us, all of you who are zooming in and viewing remotely. Again, my name is Phil Tabel. My pronouns are he and him. And I am here because I really think Seattle could do a lot better on a lot of things. I think we need a council member that is going to put public service ahead of politics. I was a high school physics teacher, worked for the National Science Foundation. I was a public defender for 15 years, and I'm currently an administrative law judge. And I've spent most of the last 20 years in public service. I do believe that we've reached a place where we need someone who understands that a lot of the basics of what you're supposed to do is actually about mobility. It's about fixing potholes and making sure the buses run on time and things like that. But my number one issue actually is making sure that we fix the sidewalk network here through District One. There is a real issue with people being able to get around everywhere, and it ties in with the same road issue, but that is my top mobility issue.
Thank you. Now, we're going to Kyler with the Maran Costa campaign.
Hi, everyone. Unfortunately, Maran is out sick, so you're stuck with me today. My name is Kyler Paris. I'm Maran's campaign manager and a recent graduate in urban studies from Pittsor College. I'm an avid reader of The Urbanist, a transit writer, and I've worked on a few Seattle campaigns because I'm passionate about creating equitable and livable cities. Maran Costa is too. I support Maran because she risked her entire career to rally coworkers, stand for, stand with warehouse workers, and tell Jeff Bezos that Amazon needed to commit to the climate and to warehouse safety. She won, then got fired illegally, and she's a badass. Maran believes in helping people get out of their cars and build wonderful neighborhoods with four floors and a corner store. District One needs safer pedestrian connections, more frequent bus service that does more than get us to and from downtown, upzoned, walkable, safe, affordable neighborhoods. District One deserves evidence-based improvements, not fear mongering.
Thank you. Now, we head to Stephen Brown.
Hi, I'm Stephen Brown. Happy to be here. Thank you all for coming. I am a 34-year Seattle resident, father of two, and a serial entrepreneur. I'm presently the founder and operator of Eltana Bagels. And we sell bagels all over the city, including all through West Seattle. I'm not just an entrepreneur and a business operator, though. I am a creator of businesses. I'm not a buy low, sell high kind of entrepreneur. I invent social experiences that really impact people, change their lives. And as a business operator, I am a very progressive, innovative business operator. We do things to enrich our employees' lives, enrich our customers' lives, and enrich the community's lives that are both innovative and profound. So, thank you for coming out and look forward to talking to you more.
Thank you. Now, we go to Preston Anderson.
Hello, everyone. I'm Preston Anderson, and I'm happy to be running here in this district, District One. As I've gone out to a lot of constituents throughout District One, I've had conversations about their top priorities. And among the top priorities are our safety, the addiction crisis, and homelessness. And I'm a clinical social worker, been doing it for the last 12 years. I've worked in addiction, I've worked in trauma care, I've worked in inpatient psychiatric settings. So, all those things that are impacting the city right now in the context of, and the behavioral health crises and the addiction crisis. It's all within my wheelhouse. When I have conversations with folks in District One, it definitely resonates with them. And in the context of transportation issues, I've been pretty vocal and consistent throughout my campaign about improving access for people that have mobility limitations. The population, I've worked with a lot of aged individuals, people that use wheelchairs, use walkers. So, one of the priorities I have on the city council would be to improve access for people with mobility challenges. Thanks.
Thank you. Now, we go to Jean Yenelli-Cretian.
Thank you, Crystal. Thank you, everyone, for being here and for making this happen. I was raised in a funeral home in Cleveland, Ohio. I'm the youngest of five children. And my grandparents and parents taught us loving kindness to people in crisis. That is where I learned compassion, and also I became a sociologist. I moved to Seattle in 2006 with great intentionality. I had lived everywhere in America, and I decided that this was the place for better work opportunity, to make more money, and to raise my young family. I did have that research company for 30 years up in Anchorage, Alaska, and got to work with indigenous populations and the Alaska Native corporations, who were doing work all over the world. I am the only candidate in District One with knowledge and experience of a 30-year researcher, small business owner, entrepreneur, public school parent, a renter with a lifelong commitment to public and community engagement. I'm a feminist, a proud member of the LGBTQ community, a breast cancer survivor, and an Italian mama to eight amazing children.
Thank you so much. Now, we will move into the lightning round. So, please make sure every candidate have your yes-and-no indicators ready. You're going to be using them a lot. All right. So, we will begin with questions about how you voted. Starting off, first question, have you voted in every general election in the past four years? So, we have all candidates saying yes. Have you voted in every primary election in the past four years? We have Stephen saying no, the rest of the candidates saying yes with a waffle and unsure by the Maran campaign. I will just go ahead and mention probably a higher degree of difficulty answering on behalf of your candidate who's not here. So, we acknowledge you're doing your best, and some of these you may not know. Okay, perfect. Did you vote yes on the King County Crisis Care Centers levy? Every candidate says yes. Did, in 2021, did you vote for Bruce Harrell for Seattle Mayor? Every candidate, with the exception of the Maran campaign, says yes. In 2021, did you vote for Lorena Gonzalez for Seattle Mayor? That's every candidate, and no, with the exception of the Maran campaign, which is an unsure. In 2021, did you vote for Nicole Thomas Kennedy for Seattle City Attorney? We have got waffles from the Maran campaign and Stephen, and no from Phil, Preston, and Jean. In 2021, did you vote for Ann Davison for Seattle City Attorney? In the general election? We have a yes from Phil, Stephen, Preston, no from Jean, and unsure from the Maran campaign. In 2022, did you vote for Julie Anderson in the general election for Washington Secretary of State? We have a yes from Jean, Preston, and the Maran campaign, no from Phil Tabel and Stephen. In 2022, did you vote for Steve Hobbs for Washington Secretary of State? We have got nos across the board. In 2022, in the general election, did you vote for Lisa Mannion for King County Prosecutor? We've got a yes from Phil, Preston, and Jean. We've got a waffle from Stephen and an unsure from Kyler, the Maran campaign. In 2022, did you vote for Jim Farrell for King County Prosecutor? We have nos across the board and unsure with the Maran campaign. In 2022, did you vote for Patty Murray for US Senate? We have yeses across the board. In 2022, did you vote for Tiffany Smiley for US Senate? We have nos across the board. In 2022, did you vote yes for ranked choice voting? We have yeses across the board, except an unsure from the Maran campaign. In 2022, did you vote yes for approval voting? Approval voting. The other question in the second part of that ballot. We've got a yes from Dean, a no from Preston and Stephen, unsure from the Maran campaign, yes from Phil Tabel. This year, did you vote for yes on the veterans, or will you be voting yes on the Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services levy? We have a yes from all candidates across the board. Will you ensure public restrooms in District One will be available and open in all or near all large public parks and gathering spots? We have yeses across the board. Have you ever waited more than 30 minutes for a bus? We have yeses across the board. Have you ever waited more than 60 minutes, an hour for a bus? Metro bus, yep. We have nos from Kyler and Stephen, yes from Phil, Preston, and Jean. So many of our sidewalks are inaccessible to many people with disabilities. Will you support a city policy that would require SDOT to repair sidewalks along roads they are repaving? Yeses across the board. Should the next transportation levy include funding to complete Seattle's missing sidewalk network on arterial streets, as well as resources to finish installing missing curb ramps and audible tactile APS signals? We have yeses across the board. Most high-salary workers receive employer-paid transit passes, but low-wage workers, not so much. Will you support legislation requiring that large employers subsidize transit passes for their workers? We have yeses across the board. Will you sponsor legislation requiring SDOT, the Seattle Department of Transportation, to prioritize bike and pedestrian safety over vehicle parking? Yeses across the board. Will you pledge to support and strengthen legislation that increases bike lanes, sidewalks, bus lanes, and street trees, even when it impacts parking and convenience for drivers or special interests? Yeses from all candidates. Debris in bike lanes is a major safety issue. Will you sponsor legislation requiring SDOT to prioritize cleaning bike lanes ahead of clearing traffic lanes? We've got some slow answers, but we've got a no from Phil Tabel, yes from the Maran campaign, yes from Stephen, a waffle from Preston, and a yes from Jean. Will you support a streetcar project and commit to connecting the streetcar lines? We've got a yes from all candidates. Have you ridden a bike in the past month? That's a yes from all candidates, except for Preston, that's a no. Have you ridden a bus in the past month? That's a no from Phil Tabel and Jean, yes from Kyler, the Maran campaign, Stephen, and Preston. Have you ever put your bike on a bus or train? We've got yeses from all candidates. Should Pike Place Market allow non-commercial delivery traffic? And Pike Place, should Pike Place Market allow non-commercial delivery car traffic?
Basically, stop cars, stop cars from being in.
That's a no from all candidates, except for Preston. Did you have a clarification, Preston?
I need a clarification. So, for the vendors that are going to Pike Place Market to drop off their goods.
That would be the commercial traffic. That's excluded from this question. Non-commercial traffic.
There's people.
People, non-vendors, non-commercial traffic. So, no from everyone. Should we accelerate the elimination of the ability to turn right on red lights to improve pedestrian safety? That's a no from all candidates, except for the Maran campaign. Should we accelerate the elimination of the ability to turn right on red lights to improve pedestrian safety? Seattle recently passed legislation saying that new installations and upgrades will prevent, will have right turns on red prohibited without the turn signal. So, should we accelerate that? Okay. Have you ever been a member of a union? Got a yes from Preston, a yes from Phil Tabel, and no from Jean and Stephen, unsure for the Maran campaign. Have you ever walked on a picket line?
On a picket line as part of it or opposing it?
Have you ever been part of a striking action, walking a picket?
Walk across a picket line?
We've got all candidates saying yes, with the exception of Stephen. Have you ever crossed a picket line? We have nos from Phil, Maran campaign, Preston, and Jean. We have a waffle from Stephen. If, is your campaign unionized? Is your campaign staff unionized? We have no across the board and a waffle on the Maran campaign. Is your campaign in the process of being unionized? We have a couple of waffles from the Maran campaign and Preston, those from Phil, Stephen, and Jean. If your campaign staff wants to unionize, will you voluntarily recognize their efforts? We have yeses across the board. Should traffic enforcement be done by sworn police? We've got a no from Phil, unsure from Maran Costa, no from Stephen, yes from Preston, and a no from Jean. Should traffic enforcement be moved outside of SPD? We've got a no from Phil Tabel, yes from the Maran campaign, and Stephen, no from Preston, and a yes from Jean. California Avenue in the Alaska Junction is already pedestrianized every Sunday for the farmer's market. Would you support a movement to close the street to cars more often? We have yeses from all candidates. Do you support banning right turns on red at red light citywide?
What was the question? I'm sorry.
Do you support banning right turns on red light signals citywide? We've got a no from Phil, Stephen, Preston, and Jean, and a yes from the Maran campaign. Councilmember Tammy Morales successfully passed a 2023 budget item to add protective barriers to all bike lanes in District Two. Will you sponsor a budget amendment to do the same for District One? We've got yeses from all candidates, except for a waffle from Phil Tabel. Do you support HB 1110, which is now law in Washington and allows four-to-six plexes citywide? We've got a yes from all candidates. Do you support going even further beyond six plexes citywide? We've got a yes from Stephen, waffles from the rest of the candidates. Will you vote to end the single-family zoning to address housing affordability? We've got a no from Phil Tabel, a rest, a yes from the remainder of the candidates. Did you vote in favor of Seattle's Social Housing Initiative 135? Got yeses across the board. Will you vote to provide additional funding for Seattle's Social Housing Public Development Authority? We have yeses from all candidates. Do you rent your residence? Oh, sorry. My apologies. So, on that last question, I misspoke and Stephen waffled. That was not a yes. So, this last question, do you rent your residence? We have yeses from Phil, Preston, Stephen, and Jean, no from the Maran campaign, and Preston. Do you own your residence? We have nos from Phil, Stephen, and Jean, yes from Preston and the Maran campaign. Are you a landlord? We have nos from all candidates. Would you vote to require landlords to report metrics, including how much rent they are charging, to help better plan housing and development needs in this district? We have yes from all candidates, with the exception of Preston. Do you agree with King County Executive Constantine's statement that the King County Jail should be closed? We have a no from Phil Tabel, Stephen, and Preston, an unsure waffle from the Maran campaign, and a yes from Jean. Will you vote to ensure that trans people can use bathrooms or public facilities that match their gender? We have yeses from all candidates. Do you agree with the City of Seattle's decision to implement the jumpstart tax? We have yeses from all candidates. Will you vote to lower divert, to lower or divert the jumpstart tax in any way? We have no across the board. Do large corporations in Seattle pay their fair share of taxes? We have nos across the board. Do small businesses pay their fair share of taxes? We have a yes from Jean, Preston, Stephen, and waffles from Maran and Phil Tabel. In order to address staffing shortages throughout the city and county, should we offer public employees like bus drivers signing and retention bonuses like police officers and sheriff deputies get? We have yeses across the board. Are you happy with Seattle's newly-built waterfront? We have no from Phil, Maran campaign, yes from Stephen, and no from Preston and Jean. Do you agree with Amazon's return-to-work mandate? We have no from Phil and Jean, no also from the Maran Costa campaign, and yes from Preston and Stephen. Do you believe more return-to-work mandates are necessary to boost Seattle's economy? We have no from Phil Tabel, Maran campaign, and Jean, yes from Stephen and Preston. And that is the close of our lightning round. Thank you, candidates. I suppose I will, I will give you the option right now before we move into the open answer question. Does anyone want to use their one card to explain any of your answers or waffles? All right, we will leave it there. Now, we will start the open answers section of the forum. We will start with candidate Phil Tabel and go straight down for this one. Just a reminder, you'll get a 60-second, you have 60 seconds to answer. There will be a 30-second notification, a 15-second notification, and then your ding will signify that you're done. First question, Seattle is very far from meeting its climate goals, and over 60% of the city's emissions come from transportation. Current climate plans will only lead to incremental and insufficient progress. What will you do to change this? Phil?
So, this is Phil Tabel answering. I think in general, we need to work with some of the experts that we've got in this region to figure out how we can move those things a lot faster. I really believe that we need to electrify our municipal fleets in a much faster way. But I think in general, a lot of it should really just be moving with a little bit more purpose. I think a lot of people are under this misconception that, you know, we can still avoid climate change issues, and we've already entered the phase where we're just in damage control. And so, I think anything that doesn't step up with real urgency is an issue. And so, I want to see these climate change. And so I want to see these climate change measures moved much faster.
Go ahead.
Kyler with filling in for Marin. Yeah, transportation is over 60% of the carbon emissions. It's more than double of what it is for building emissions, the next biggest polluter. So we need to get people out of the cars and how we do that is making non-car options as incredible and worthwhile as possible. That means safe, fast, frequent, efficient transit options. That means expanding rapid ride systems and actually doing it with this next levy. It means free transit for non-car owners would be a great program. A safe bike network with affordable e-bike rebate programs. And we should be putting some of our new progressive revenues towards transportation and making sure that our, our next move Seattle levy actually meets the, the needs of, of the next generation, which is not cars. It's, it's getting people out of their cars.
Hi, this is Steven. I've lived in cities that are much more dense than Seattle. I grew up in Toronto, then lived in Montreal, San Francisco and Hong Kong. My, I never felt more free than I have in those cities where I hardly ever got in a car to drive. I think that Seattle would do well to shift its focus even more dramatically to making both choice riders and dependent riders have a greater transit experience. I've got ideas to do that. I think in a, in a district like District One, we have to make it so when you're going east to west, when you're going over those hills, that any transportation, personal transportation method you're going to use on the other side of the hill needs to be easily accommodated on the bus. I would do that to get, to rid the city of excuses for sticking in their cars. I would let the prices of parking go up even higher. I would use both the carrot and the stick to accomplish this.
Well, this is Preston Anderson. I would want to start off by creating a 10th committee and that would be the Environmental Justice Committee on the, the city council to ensure that we're intensely focusing our efforts toward addressing climate change. Further, I'd like to make sure that we're electrifying the entire city fleet of vehicles and then also incentivizing industry in south of downtown, part of District One, so that the port area where all the freight traffickers still and incentivize the freight trucks that go in and out of the port to make sure they're electrified. There are plenty of other ways to ensure that other industries in the area are moving toward greener technology. I would also want to make sure that, you know, public transit is built out more efficiently and effectively. It's a pretty frustrating that we're at where we're at in 2023 with not with kind of a patchwork system of public transportation. So I definitely want to build that out to include the light rail and then also smaller electrical shuttles that go deeper into our neighborhoods, making it more accessible for people.
Yes, I think climate change should be top of mind with regard to our transportation needs. We need to get people out of cars and we need to get into electrified vehicles. We need a better experience for buses. We need to be able to put more bikes on them. We need them electrified as well. And we need to be giving bus passes to people who are in. Everybody should have a free bus ride, in my opinion. If we get people on a bus, then we're all the better. I love to ride my bike and we need a few more bike lanes that are safe. People think I'm crazy when they see me. I live on Faultloroy in California and I head down California and they like, dang, you know? I think we need to build a walkable community, that 15 minute community where you can get everywhere you need to get. And that you have your amenities, you have your work, you have your life, your kids are at school and it's all within 15 minutes.
Thank you. And we have one challenge card. So go ahead, Phil Tavell.
So I realize, obviously answering this question, one of the biggest things is making sure we've got mass transit coming here to West Seattle, which is overseeing and making sure we get light rail here and that it can expand our network, you know, in this area. And that's also got to go hand in hand with making the bus experience better overall, which is cleaner and safer, but also just more, better coverage overall. I know I've talked to a lot of people who've talked about the fact that you can go from core area to core area within the city pretty easily. The hard part is getting everywhere. And, you know, we also have a lot of issues with people that have mobility issues, not able to use the buses. This goes back to what I said about the sidewalks. But again, if we're looking at ways to lower carbon emissions and be greener, mass transportation and better system are the two things that are going to make the biggest difference for us.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to the second question and we're going to start with the Marin Costa campaign and then go down, come around. Our current transportation system makes equity, safety, health and climate change worse and defenders of the status quo are well entrenched. Can you describe a time in your experience when you took on defenders of the status quo to improve equity, public health, safety or the environment? Answers related to transportation are preferred, but we are more interested in a time where you exhibited courage on a controversial issue regardless of the subject matter.
Yeah, this is Kyler again for Marin's campaign. Marin, Pina Gar, starting organizing just a few years ago when she was a senior Amazon employee and saw, was increasingly fed up with the lack of any climate commitment from the world's largest corporation. She had been in board meetings and, and, and big meetings with Jeff Bezos and won, and she knew that she could do it again. And so she rallied coworkers, co-founded Amazon Employees for Climate Justice, led a historic tech walkout. And they ended up getting more than $10 million in commitments. As soon as she was organizing alongside warehouse workers for better conditions, she got fired. So she was doing this all at serious personal risk at an over 20 year career. And to me, that, that's a really significant thing for a person to do. And now looking towards, you know, transportation and housing and how climate can be impacted on a really local level.
When George Floyd was murdered in Minneapolis, Eltana has found itself right in the middle of the protests. And on the second day, all of our neighbors basically had shut down and we had made the choice to stay open. We only had a trickle of customers, of course, but we fed the protesters for free. We incentivized our customers by giving them a free dozen for every $50 they donated to social justice causes. We didn't board up so that we sent the message that the community is still here with you. Did we experience some disruption? Yes. Did we experience some vandalism a little bit? But that was a perfect cost for us to pay. We were happy to pay as part of our contribution to the social justice advancements. So, you know, our, our employees were all there with us. Our owners were all there with us and we're glad we did it.
This is Preston Anderson. So directly out of the army, when I got my four-year degree, began working at the Downtown Emergency Service Center. And at the time, you know, was still in the embryonic stages of getting unionized. So I helped with that effort, but further, I was only making 1270 an hour and I ultimately had to get a second job. So with the union, SEIU 1199, went down to Olympia to, to fight for higher wages for frontline workers that were working in the, the homicide programs. But the thing that I'm most proud of is that I, I turned down a wage increase here at, working in the Dixie Treatment down that joint based Louis McCord and chose to travel 3,000 miles across the country to move to South Carolina to take up an addiction treatment position there and work on voter suppression issues. And I was able to partner with a group or organization called the South Carolina Progressive Network. And we were able to work against gerrymandering and voter suppression issues.
Jean? One of the proudest studies I was involved in involved Alaska Native communities in very rural areas. The National Science Foundation came up and asked me to conduct studies with elders, with community members, with people that were in the business community and with children. And the startling facts of that study are still looked at today. You could actually go and put up the National Science Foundation Global Warming Study by Cration Research Group. And you will see our work with those communities. What we revealed in those explanations by elders first was that the communities and the environment was dramatically changing based on what was happening with the climate, the warming of the climate. What they told us was that what you are experiencing in your communities will be exaggerated in the future. So if you have rain, you will have more rain. If you have snow, you will have more snow. If you are in hot climates, you will have increasingly hotter climates.
Phil?
Can you actually repeat the question?
Sure. Can you describe a time in your experience when you took on defenders of the status quo to improve equity, public safe, public health, safety or the environment?
So when I was working at the National Science Foundation, they were actually looking to change. So there were basically three levels of people that worked at the National Science Foundation within the grant, the funds granting division. There was the, the administrative staff, there were the science education analysts, and then there were the program directors. And they tried to put forth a program that would say that anybody in the administrative staff level was no longer going to get any public transportation subsidies or any of their housing subsidies. If in fact, they were being sent somewhere farther away from their job. And so I actually got all of the science education analysts to come together to stand with the administrative staff and say that we didn't think it was fair for, especially at that point, the lowest income members of the staff to have more pressure put on them. And so we were actually able to change that around and they, they dropped the program.
Thank you. Now move on to the next question. We'll start with Steven on this one. District One has expanded to include Georgetown and Soto, which is the most dangerous neighborhood in the city for traffic violence. Three people have been killed in Soto this year alone, seven people were killed last year and seven in 2021. What do you plan to do to end traffic deaths in Soto?
Hi, this is Steven. The, the separation of alternative vehicles and cars in the Soto area is terrible. The people are crossing streets, you know, all through the block because there's, the blocks are so long. I would do more to slow down the traffic, perhaps with speed slowing devices like bumps, more signage, better lighting. It is a very dangerous neighborhood. That might be a neighborhood where no, no right turns on red would be, would make a great deal of sense.
Got it. Preston?
Yes, so, so I, I've talked about this issue before, particularly with the, the bike community. And, you know, they, they talk about the pedestrian deaths in Soto and also the dangers that bicyclists experienced on Soto. But one of the things I was suggesting that we need to build more pedestrian bridges in Soto and the Georgetown area, I work in that area. I work on fourth and Seal, so I know how dangerous it is. You know, we have several lanes, six lanes that get across within a short amount of time and it is very dangerous. I, I see that. I get it. But where appropriate, we need to build more pedestrian bridges and for bicycle lanes, we need to build a protected bike lanes down in Soto and Georgetown.
Jean?
Soto is our industrial community. And so we have to think about what's going on there is trucks and industry coming in and out during the day and then they're all gone. And so there's not enough right now protections, light, security. It becomes like a desert. And so that is what's opening up for a lot of the crime, at least the hours that they're reporting the crime is from like 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM. I think that the problem exists because we don't have any activity going on there. You know, we have Piner Square now as part of District One. And so I think we just need to create bike lanes there. Some things going on that are getting us to move down in through those areas. I think that these desolate areas where we do not have a lot of people or activity are where we are seeing a lot of the problems.
Phil?
I think one of the things that needs to happen right away is taking a look at where we have the places that a lot of pedestrians are going, like some of the services that people who are lower income need to access. And they are not intelligently located when you look at where bus stops are, where the crosswalks are, where the lights are. And I know from a lot of the people that were actually clients of mine when I was a public defender, you know, they would talk about that. They would talk about the safety issues, about the fact that where they would get let off by the bus or where they would have to cross was at such a distance from where the actual crosswalk or a traffic light was. So I think we need to take a big look at that neighborhood and find out where we're being not so intelligent about doing those crossings. And we've got to have more protected bike lanes down there because that intersection between industry and pedestrians and bicyclists, it needs to be better separated. And the last thing is looking at our public safety issue and making sure that we fully fund and fully staff the police. Having officers present is something that will keep those speeds down and will hopefully have a positive impact.
Thank you. Kyler with the Marin campaign.
Yep. Kyler with Marin campaign. Yeah, when you look at SDOT's High Injury Network, they identify a series of problem spots in Soto, Georgetown and South Park, centered around the First Avenue Bridge and to the north through the, the long blocks in Soto. It's largely mid-block collisions and non-signalized collisions. We need to put up some, some red lights. We need to make people actually stop. We need to put in some more mid-block crossing locks. A lot of the people hanging around Soto and probably the, at the, you know, feeling the brunt edge of how dangerous it is via pedestrian are really low income unhoused people. We need to provide more services that are away from, from dangerous spots like this. And, and commuters also, bike lanes to get from downtown to the south end are desperately needed. I know Tammy Morales is already working on this and the next District One representative will have to take on that mantle for the Soto area. And finally, Georgetown, South Park, people just trying to get from their homes to grocery stores. We need to make that safer across the bridge.
Steven? You did. So now we will start with Preston. And this next question is, for the 2024 Move Seattle Renewal Levy, how will you balance the pressure to prioritize bridge repair, maintenance and freight while also ensuring robust investment in transit, bike pedestrian and bike and pedestrian safety?
I'm anticipating the next move levy to be, include more funding than what it was at its previous inception. But bridge repair, bridge replacement, that is a high priority of mine. We can't push it out any further. The, the consequences would be just too catastrophic in that situation. So that would be a priority of mine. We've already experienced it here acutely in West Seattle with the bridge being down. And then just, I think it was a month ago, there was a span connect to connects off of the West Seattle Bridge where a hole developed. And any Seattle, West Seattle commuter can tell you that, that hole just did not appear from anywhere. You travel that West Seattle Bridge and you see plenty of, you know, chips in the concrete and parts of the, the bridge falling apart. And it's no surprise to us. So I think more people will be behind that. But yes, I do support all the other priorities of transportation and public safety and access.
Thank you. Jean?
Yes, I do support the, the next move levy, particularly with regard to the bridge and what we've been experiencing West Seattle, the repair and replacement. You know, this bridge has been a problem forever and people tell stories about it, what the things that have happened over the years. It would be a priority of mine that we finally get the much needed attention. And I don't understand why we're not doing more with the federal monies that are for bridges. You know, have we, how much have we gotten for that? I know we've done a lot with the bus service that we were able to get the federal dollars from that same pot of money. But we haven't, I don't know how we have not secured money for the West Seattle Bridge. That would be a priority of mine.
This is Phil Tavell. And one of the first things is when the move levy comes out, you got to make sure that we're asking for the right amount of money. And part of that obviously is going through the projects we have and making sure that we're going to fund it evenly between the bridge maintenance and repair we need, between the roads, the other moveability issues that we've got. And with respect to the bridges, we've got $3.4 billion worth of bridge infrastructure in this city and less than $20 million of a year is being spent on that maintenance. And as we very painfully learned with the West Seattle Bridge, that was not enough. And so I definitely will focus in a lot of ways on that bridge side because that infrastructure, like we saw, if we lose it, we have a bigger issue. We also need to stay on top of Washdott as we've seen, like with that hole that developed going from the bridge onto the highway. This is something we have to work with them to say, we shouldn't be the only ones responsible, but you need to help. And then the flip side to that again is just staying in contact with the communities so that we're aware of issues when they come up.
Thank you.
This is Kyler with Marin's campaign. Yeah, the move Seattle levy is going to be crucial to the next phase in Seattle. It's a 30% of SDOT's funding at least. And we need to prioritize safety, equity and what we want people to do to get around Seattle, how we want people to get around Seattle. And, you know, we're talking a lot about bridge repairs. It's really important. But there's also ways to repair, replace a bridge and then there's ways to there's ways to turn it into a wider highway, a bigger, that's ensuring that people stay in their cars for decades and decades to come. And guys, pedestrian and bike infrastructure is so cheap compared to a bridge. It doesn't take very much bridge money to build a lot of bike lanes, to protect them, to make sidewalks that have curb cuts and actually are safe for everyone in the city. So those need to be priorities. And it's, it's so inexpensive compared to, you know, a giant bridge.
Sure. For the 2024 Move Seattle Renewal Levy, how will you balance the pressure to prioritize bridge repair, maintenance, and freight while also ensuring robust investment in transit and bike and pedestrian safety?
Well, as I said in earlier, this is Steven, as I said in earlier questions, my, my, my bias is towards people who are moving around the city without their cars. So I'm going to be an advocate for balancing it favorably to people who are choosing to move around without their cars. The, I'm also understanding that we want to go to, with the levy, for with the levy once with a big number rather than two or three times with middling numbers. People are get, will get weary of that process before they get shell-shocked at a, at a price. So I would go with a large levy, go with an ambitious plan, go with one that's strongly focused on, on alternative transportation.
Thank you. And Preston? Gotcha. So we're going to start this time and then move back around. This question, more than half of Seattle's public schoolchildren do not get bus to school. What are your proposals to make it easier and safer for kids to walk and bike to school?
Yes, I have a child at West Seattle High School, and I had kids grow up at Elkhai and Fairmont Park School. And so it, it is an issue that there are quite often children walking around our neighborhoods in our streets and that I have, over the years, been concerned. When there were things going on in the neighborhoods, I would swing through and pick up a bunch of kids and take them where they were heading off to. There, you know, we are a walkable community in terms of where I lived in Elkhai and where I've lived now at, at Bautleroy in California. And I think we just have to watch out for our children and that we have to make sure there's enough sidewalks and that they are together in numbers, that they're not walking by themselves ever.
So this is Phil Tavell. I know my son was a fifth grader at Arbor Heights Elementary School, and one of the things that I really thought was very cool was a lot of families did these walking and biking trains with their kids to school in the morning and in the afternoon coming home. And what I saw was nice is, is there's that strength in number issue when the kids are all together and they're doing this at the same time. It is a whole lot safer, but it also highlighted where we needed better crosswalks that actually had lights that needed to be painted, where you've got, you know, reflectors, the fact that, you know, we've got marvelous light in the summertime. However, in the winter, it gets dark pretty early. And sometimes when kids are coming home from school, we don't have areas where there's good lighting. So it's the protected bike lanes, protected pedestrian lanes, fixing our sidewalk network. And I think the schools working to actually bring kids together to show that, hey, in your neighborhood, you all live over in this one area, so the four or five of you could come in together and go home together. And I think those things are nice because they also build community.
I was hanging around near West Seattle High School the other day, and I think an important thing that shouldn't be left out of this is that people aren't only going to, you know, as high schoolers in particular, aren't only going to and from school, but we should think about what other hotspots are around, where else should we be protecting kids? There's Seattle Public Schools, SDOT speeding cameras that have been implemented in some places. We need to make sure those tickets are actually going out. And that's easily implementable program across the city. Bike buses are awesome, like Phil was talking about. It usually takes some volunteers to put together, but where we can support and how we can support that, we should. And there's state funding that we can access that we aren't currently for safe routes to school. If we bring our standards in line with what the state's looking for, we can do a lot more with state funding. And yeah, prioritizing people that are not able to get in cars, like kids, making it safe for them to, you know, even get on transit once you're in your teens, that's a, that should be our goal as a city.
Thank you. And Steven?
This is Steven. Transit is an archetypal part of a young person's coming of age. And, and whether it's 12, 13, 14, or 15, I did a study in the city when I worked for a transit agency about how parents make decisions about when their children are ready to embrace transit. And I just think that we could do a lot more to have them say yes to transit at an earlier age. We could do more with safe spaces at the bus stops, brightly lit bus stops. We could do more with education. We could do more with modeling, the, the use of buses. I had a, I have a disabled son, and he had bus training where somebody came to our house and showed him how to ride a bus and actually followed him a street away, watching him in his process of learning. That, that's suitable for him, but for young, for groups of young people, it could be part of the school curriculum, how you, how you move around the city without your parents picking you up.
Preston?
Yes, so I'm a board member of the Chief Self PTSA, and among the things that we've discussed is increasing mental health programming at the schools. And my background is in behavioral health, and I, I'm a bit advocate for not only mindfulness, but also physical exercise. I tell my clients that the benefits of physical exercise all the time, especially, you know, I work with people with significant psychiatric disorders. And I could tell you about, you know, exercise will release, you know, neurogenesis, and we could talk, you know, a little bit about that. But what I want to focus on is, you know, having kids develop an appreciation for physical activity, walking, biking, and then making sure that we're having protected bike lanes for kids to use, and also the lights that allow easy access and conveyance of bikes for, for children.
Jean? Got it. All right, so we're starting here. Police officers write an average of just 11 tickets each day during traffic stops across Seattle. Automated enforcement cameras issue 50 times as many traffic tickets, and Seattle plans to double its number of speed cameras this year. How can that expansion be done equitably?
So this is Phil Tavell. I mean, one of the way that's done equitably is making sure you actually place them evenly across the city. We are aware of the income levels in different neighborhoods, where we know about what neighborhoods are communities of color and which are not. And I think, you know, when you're doing something like cameras for, for red lights or for speeding cameras, there's no reason why that shouldn't just be in the trouble spots, in the places that have the most issues. Get to those areas first, and don't let any special interests jump in and tell you where they should go.
This is Kyler for the Maron Campaign. We need a data-driven approach. We need to take into account where high wealth areas are and make sure that they're getting just as many speeding cameras. It's an interesting question for equity framing, I think, because if, if a lot of the drivers are going to be in marginalized communities, so are the people that we're trying to protect with these cameras. So it's important that we, we keep priorities in both places. Data-driven, look for, for patterns of disproportionate impacts. And if we are getting disproportionate impact and on fines and fees, but not actually protecting people, then we need to reevaluate the, the worth of the program. But definitely support expansion of speeding cameras. We just need to make sure that the process is transparent, community-informed. They're going to know best, the, the people in the area are going to know best where the most dangerous spots are. And I can assure you that in wealthier neighborhoods on straightaways, people are still driving the cars way too fast.
Hi, this is Steven. Of course, the schools need to be tightly monitored and, and well-camered so that there's almost zero tolerance, zero tolerance for people going over the speed limit during times of school activity. I think that the, the cameras need to be placed equitably around the city so that areas that are troublesome are, are areas that are monitored. And there can be a, a different approach related to how people are given relaxed provisions around fine payment to take into account equity issues, while still maintaining a rigor around making sure that areas that have been dangerous historically are, are the dangers reduced by speed cameras.
So with traffic cameras, I think we need to develop an index where, you know, there are already concentrations of traffic cameras and look at where, you know, they're not concentrated, you know, to disperse them evenly. I think you need to hire experts that do that. But I do place value on the presence of a human, a police officer is able to make a, you know, that discretion in the moment. The discretion in the moment, I think that a human factor would be more favorable than a traffic camera. I, I think with traffic cameras and any kind of monitoring systems, I get a little, I don't look at them too favorably with, you know, surveillance with the traffic cameras and any kind of surveillance type of systems.
And Jean?
Well, road rage is something I've studied many times, and in many communities, it's real. And we do find these straightaways where the, the behavior of drivers annoys other drivers. And so it's very interesting to study that. And I think that we can do more with some data-driven approaches to where are the trouble spots? Where are people getting sort of angry and creating this rage that's happening? Definitely, school areas are most critical and it's, you know, must be, we must be trained to know where they are and to slow down in those spaces and places. We need to talk to communities. They know their neighborhoods better than we do. And I think with a strong community engagement program, we can find out those trouble spots, and we can work with the community and put up speed cameras where they recommend.
Great. This question, we'll start with Kyler from the Maron Campaign. How will you encourage more people to ride transit and retain riders frustrated with unreliable service?
Yeah, transit needs to be fast, convenient, accessible, and safe at all times. And we need to deliver on that. And right now, it looks like the biggest piece, piece that we are missing, the most urgent need, is more bus drivers. We should be giving them incentives like we're doing with the police department to hire more, to, to retain, to get new hires. We, we are going to not even use our full transportation levy that's put towards metro buses because we simply don't have enough people to pay to do it, which probably means we need higher wages. We need to make an attractive job. We, we should be, it, not everyone is just going in and out of downtown every day anymore. People that depend on transit already are probably going from one part of the city to the next, so we need to reorient our, our bus grid. We need to make it, we can put red paint down anywhere within days, we just don't. So we can make bus lanes where we need them and be flexible. We should aim for non-commuters, teens, elderly, it's already free for teens, let's get them on buses.
Thank you. Steven?
Hi, this is Steven. So I ride the bus every day to work. I walk up from my home in, in the gulch there in Genesee Gulch up to the C bus. And my experience with the buses is pretty darn positive. So I'm going to reflect a little bit on what I see that I would think they could expand around the city. The bus drivers I'm interacting with are in good moods and, and kind and gracious. They're patient with the people that they're waiting on. If they're not getting paid enough, shame on us. They should get paid more. Our staff, our frontline staff at Altana probably makes more than bus drivers right now, and it shouldn't be the case. Bus drivers are invaluable part of our lives. I talked to you about my son who's disabled. He is known by 50 bus drivers in the city. He rides buses everywhere, and, and they're a big part of our lives, they're a big part of his life. And I would, I support making that job something of a living career.
Yes, I think first and foremost, it's important to develop a coherent public transportation system. And I'm a big proponent of light rail system. We need to build it out further and build it out faster than what we are currently. So that's a separate issue. But if you go out throughout West Seattle, you'll see plenty of bus routes that have been closed down. And I've mentioned many times before that we need to have smaller electric shuttles that go out to those neighborhoods and, you know, restart those bus routes. I think a lot of people lose confidence and trust in the, the public transportation system when they see bus routes closed down, and they, that just reinforces their inclination to use their vehicles. So we need to make sure that we're going deeper into neighborhoods with smaller shuttles, electric shuttles, and we need to build out a coherent system throughout the city.
Jean?
Hi. Buses need to be convenient and safe, and we really need a lot more support for those of us that are trying to put bikes on them. I do understand also that there's a great level of workplace discrimination going on in that system because we know that it's a lot of women, bus drivers, and a lot of BIPOC bus drivers. And so the fact that they are not earning a respectable wage and that people don't want that job speaks volumes about discrimination going on in the transportation area. The levy that it has money and we're not using it is a travesty. You know, how do things like that happen? Like, how do we get it and then not use it? And then we look at all, why can't we give it to the bus drivers? Why can't we move it around? It just gets so specific about what it needs to be used for that it just ties our hands at every turn.
And Phil?
This is Phil Tavell. After talking to a lot of bus drivers and talking to a lot of riders in different parts of the city, a few things are very obvious. One, the bus drivers actually do need to have increased wages. Right now, one of the things that they're having to deal with is they're dealing with riders who don't have homes and don't have places to go, and they're ending up on the bus. And they're having to deal with situations that have co-occurring issues with mental health issues and substance abuse issues. So I think dealing with our greatest homeless, greater homelessness issue and getting services to those people is good. And as I stated before, we need a bus system that is actually efficient from every part of the city to every other part of the city. And I think we focus way too much on certain core areas. And then also the other part of that is the sidewalk network again, that when you put up a new bus stop that makes it look good and, and inviting, but you can't get two blocks away from it, you're not serving all of the people, especially anybody with a mobility issue. So it's about safety, more bus drivers, better routes, and making sure that people understand we've done that.
Great.
I started this one.
Yep. All right, so now we are going to move on to a question about bikes. Biking is an efficient, affordable, and climate-friendly way to get around, but Seattle's bike mode share rate has remained stuck at 3% to 4% for several years. Why do you think that is, and what will you do to increase bike ridership if elected?
Hi, this is Steven. Of course, the move to electric bikes is, is well-suited to Seattle's topography. And so I would encourage that us not to draw, to be overly negative on the bike sharing data when compared to other cities that are flatter. I think that the electrified modes of, of bike travel are going to take off, and they're going to take off in Seattle in particular. The private sales of electric bikes are soaring. Those companies are doing very well. I think that what we, the city of Seattle could, should approach the, you know, some of the top providers with an innovative collaborative public-private partnership to bring in electrified mechanisms to get around. I ride a scooter from, from Altama Capitol Hill down to the C bus on Third Avenue, but I'm too heavy to take the scooter up. So I just walk because the electric bikes are not available and quite frankly, they don't have time for the, to wait for the regular bike.
Preston?
Yeah, Steven essentially said initially what I was going to say. I think, you know, the, the topography, you know, for the history of Seattle, you know, has not lent itself that well to traditional bikes. But now that, you know, we have the, the technology here with electric bikes, I think that, that will change, those numbers will change. And I think the city of Seattle has an opportunity to incentivize providers of those electric bikes to reduce the cost so it's more accessible to communities that have, you know, financial challenges of purchasing a $1,200 electric bike. And I think that's probably like even, probably not even realistic, right? A $1,200 electric scooter. But hopefully we could get the, that price down. And also with public transportation, offer more conveyance options for bringing your electronic scooter or electronic bike onto a shuttle or onto a bus. I think we need to develop greater capacity for that so we could, you know, and reach out further to, throughout Seattle with those electric bikes.
Lots of friends and family were using their electric bikes or getting electric bikes during pandemics. So I really saw a great rise of all of us that were living in West Seattle. But I also, with the bikes that are being placed now around town, like especially down by Elkhai, I've heard from a lot of residents that are complaining about where they're putting them. Like, is there any kind of community engagement or conversation about where they put like 15 lime? Like, is there any kind of community engagement or conversation about where they put like 15 Lime bikes? That are scooters or whatever, like you're like putting them in front of people's homes. They're putting them where people have views, you know, of the water. And there's like bikes in their view. I mean, people are complaining about where they're putting the free bikes or the paid bikes. I never use those, so I don't know much about them, but they're just all of a sudden plopped in our community. I think there needs to be some community engagement about when they get placed in a neighborhood and where.
Could you repeat the question again?
Sure. Biking is an efficient, affordable, and climate-friendly way to get around. But Seattle bike mode share rate has remained stuck at three to 4% for several years. Why do you think that is? And what will you do to increase bike ridership if elected?
So one of the things is I think we lose sight of the fact that this is an incredibly hilly city. And for much of the year, it's also a very cold, wet city. And what that means, I think we should be smarter about where we are trying to get people to ride more bikes and making it safer. For example, several years ago, they were talking about taking away half of the parking on Morgan going up from California to 35th to put in a protected bike lane. And, you know, as I talk to people in that neighborhood, nobody's biking up the hill there. It's not a common place to go. But let's say, for example, coming out of Fremont into downtown along Dexter, it's incredible bike usage. And I think trying to identify neighborhoods for the people living here, where they could actually bike more effectively and go, we can focus our efforts on, you know, lights and protected bike lanes and things that make it safest and more accessible where it's really truly useful and not spend the same kind of money in places around the city where it's just not going to be used, no matter what you do to it.
This is Kyler for the Martin Campaign. I'm actually in favor of plopping bikes and bike infrastructure everywhere. I think that most car trips are under five, I know most car trips are under five miles. You can do that on an e-bike without breaking a sweat. Protected bike lanes everywhere, especially connections to transit. The protected part is really crucial. We have a few fits and starts of bike lanes in District One. But when you are, when they're car door lanes, I don't feel particularly safe in those usually. And I can't imagine someone who's new to riding around the city would feel safe either. So let's protect them. We have some, a few problem spots that are, people actually bike through that are just not being met with the the infrastructure they need. Soto commuters coming through the, from downtown to the South End or West Seattle, Southwest Seattle to South Seattle, like I talked about with the First Avenue Bridge, just no safe routes across to get to things like groceries and necessary services. And the Faultleroy Protected Bike Lane from 2018 needs to be revived.
Thank you. All right. So we have two more questions. In the interest of time, we'll make one super quick and make this a yes, no. Raise your hand unless you have your paddles handy. Oh, you all have them handy. Look at this. Would you vote to ensure fair, free transit for everyone? That's a yes from Phil, Preston, and Jean, a no from Steven, and a yes from Kyler with the Martin Campaign. All right. Final question. How will you ensure that SDOT, that the SDOT budget proportionally funds safe, pleasant routes for the 40% of Seattle residents who are not drivers and currently get 4% of the budget? Will you collect damage restitution from drivers who destroy property or injury? What's your approach? And we're starting with Preston. Oh, sorry. I will, it's getting up on the screen. If you, I will also repeat it. How will you ensure that the SDOT budget provides proportionally safe, pleasant routes for the 40% of Seattle residents who are not drivers and who only get 4% of the budget? Will you collect damage restitution from drivers who destroy property or injure others?
I think that's an issue that needs to be studied further, just, you know, determine what the impact is, you know, how much we can collect from that potential revenue source. But I'm definitely in favor of, in favor of developing more equitable distribution of the transportation funds for 40% of the Seattle residents. I think it's unfair if they're, you know, using public transportation and they're not getting a return for, you know, what they they put into the system.
Jean?
Yeah, this is a very interesting question because I do think that, I mean, in learning that there's 40% that are not drivers. And I, it's almost like if there is damage being done, who's to pay for it? And I think at this point that it should, we should collect some restitution when someone has done something that others had not had any involvement in. I mean, if we're just like, it's like the Tea Party here. It's like, we don't use it and we're being asked to pay for it. So I think definitely drivers need to be responsible. And if 40% of the community is not driving, I didn't realize it was that high of a number, that we do need to think more about the balance.
This is Phil Tavell. I think one of the starting places is actually talking to a lot of the groups that are sponsoring tonight's forum and helping to identify, you know, maybe three or four specifics that we could then go to Sound Transit with and talk to them about, or I'm sorry, SDOT, go to SDOT with and talk to them about the fact that these need to be prioritized and why, and show them the specific data behind our requests. With respect to restitution, this is something I dealt with as a public defender. You know, the courts have to do a better job of staying on top of people who do not take care of their restitution. It's one of those things that kind of falls by the wayside that it's not actively pursued. And I totally believe that people who have damage and within a settlement, they have to pay restitution back to the city. We need to be on top of them. And that's going to be letters and it's going to be enforcement. It's going to be making sure that if they can't pay the cash, they can do community service. But whatever it is, we can do more to ensure that the people who have done damage actually pay for it.
Kyler for the Martin Campaign. Yeah, I I think restitution's definitely an interesting idea. I think we need to make sure that we're implementing this in a really conscious, equitable way. Fines and fee systems in the criminal punishment system overwhelmingly impact black and brown people, people that are really low income. So we should consider all options like that. But I really think, you know, I, when I'm in downtown Seattle, I'm seeing full bus stops. And I've driven through the absolutely empty Highway 99 tunnel. We subsidize cars for billions of dollars. We do not do the same for bus riders, for for pedestrians, for bikers. Like I said earlier, bike and pedestrian infrastructure is so cheap. It, that's probably part of why it's only 4%, but it should be a lot higher because we do not yet have a network that is safe and reliable for everyone in the city to get around without a car.
Hi, this is Steven. 4% for 40%, that's just, that's just crazy. I mean, the streets are not for cars, the streets are for people. SDOT is there to serve people. And I would, you know, call for a more equitable balance between people who choose not to use their cars or people who don't have cars. I would, you know, as I said earlier, my bias is to lean into providing, to making Seattle a great city to live without a car. And so, you know, as it relates to transit, helping, making it so attractive for the choice rider that the dependent rider gets to ride for free. And that would be the focus of my efforts.
Well, thank you very much. And that brings the question portion of this forum to a close. I want to thank the candidates Phil Tavell, Kyler Paris with the Maran Costa Campaign, Steven Brown, Preston Anderson, and Jean Yenelli Cration. Thank you so much all for your answers and for sharing with the voters tonight. Very important to sit in front of voters and make sure that they understand who you are and help them make their decision. I want to thank the audience, both here and online, so much for tuning in and for sending questions, doing all of that. A very special thank you to all of the volunteers and coordinators this evening and to the sponsoring organizations. Thank you so much. Timing is not easy. Getting this all set up and coordinated is not easy. And so a lot of work into this went into this and I appreciate it. I also want to remind you again about the City of Seattle's Democracy Voucher Program. The City of Seattle will provide each resident over 18 and who is a US citizen, a US national or lawful permanent resident, aka green card holder, with $100 in democracy vouchers that you can donate to a candidate or candidates of your choice, as long as they're participating in the program. Finally, I want to remind everyone again to vote. Ballots will mail to your mailbox starting Wednesday, July 12. You can register to vote, update your registration, and do, see what will be on your ballot at myvote.wa.gov. I also want to remind you that if you've had a previous felony conviction, your right to vote is now automatically restored after you serve your prison term, even while on community supervision. Go to freethevotwa.org, that's freethevotwa.org for more details. Thank you so much for attending and tuning in. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so. Thank you so much, everybody. I just wanted to do a quick reminder. Crystal just took all of my reminders to vote, but I wanted to share that if you are curious, or watch the wire. If you are curious or have friends in other council districts, we do have an upcoming forum for District Four in Northeast Seattle, which we will be working to reschedule after it was postponed. That one's going to be virtual. And we also have videos and transcripts available for our forums in District Five up in North Seattle and District Three in Central Seattle. And the recording and transcript of this forum will be available as well if you'd like to share it with folks. Thank you again to all of our candidates and to Crystal.